I have six, there are no calls meeting to order. We do have a note here real quick that Greenup Day is Saturday, May 7th, that's the upcoming. First order is agenda additions and deletions, I'm told that we have none tonight. The select board minutes for April 18th, everybody was present for that one. Do I have a motion, a second to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
And we go second.
Second.
Anything that needs to be changed here that isn't on it or needs to be corrected, added, added?
I like, I like the phrasing of when we're talking to just the, yeah. That was pretty good. The extensive conversation we had sums it up pretty well.
I, I'm recusing myself from voting on this because I wasn't at this meeting.
You're correct.
I was not present, so I will not be voting on this.
Okay, I'll call a question before they were present.
Yes, on the 18th I was not here. And it says that in the minutes I was not in attendance, so it's correct.
Okay.
I'm confirming.
I'll call a question, I'll say who they are.
Hi.
Any calls? The minutes from 4:21, this was held right here at the town office. Bruce, Captain, and myself were the three that were present. Is there anything that needs to be changed in those minutes?
I don't think so, it seemed, it seemed good to me.
I agree.
Hearing none, I'll call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pay orders currently is showing us 1,594,218.16. Can I get a motion to fill the pay orders?
I make a motion to approve the pay orders as of May 3rd, 2022, for the amount of 1,594,218.16.
For a second.
Second.
Anything need to be changed, added, deleted? Hearing none, I'll call a motion, all in favor of 1,594,218.16. Say aye.
Aye.
Any calls? Honorable mention, Sandy's asked me to thank Bruce for filling in the transfer table. Last week, one of the employees was absent. The construction permission for overseeing Greenup Day, given that it's going to be this Saturday. And I would also bring a note that Julie Sharon, this Friday will be her 20th year as Town Clerk and Treasurer. She was for about 10 years prior to that, the Town Administrator. Road Commissioner.
Not a whole lot, they just started kind of off season. Steve, Steve can probably give you a better update on the roads itself, when he's doing, I think you're in Sugar Hill now.
Yep.
Back to Perry, Perry's early, West Hill was done. I was reading over Sandy's stuff here that she sent out for the salt shed and stuff. I don't, we're going to talk about that now, are we?
Sure, go ahead.
On, you know, getting bins and stuff and trying to get ramps and stuff started for that. Are they still planning, are they still planning on going ahead with what we talked about last year? Extending their shed that snared out, previous shed? The roof line back, so we, and turn the salt shed, so you drive it in from the side? Nothing has changed on that, we're still looking at that, I presume?
Was, weren't we talking about this a few meetings ago and it was actually a completely redo of it? I thought, my understanding?
So, yeah, so where, the idea was to tear down the existing salt shed.
Right.
Space to, if you extend the sand shed.
If you're, yeah. Basically, it's just extending the roof line. That's pre-existing for the sand shed, back around 50 feet.
Okay.
So we ended up with a, instead of coming into the salt shed straight on, it'd be coming into it at a 90-degree angle. And it would be one bay for salt and one bay for storing dry equipment.
Okay.
Keep it under cover.
Yeah.
But it would be a complete rebuild of the shed with a new opening?
Yes, it'd be a new extension.
Okay.
To the pre-existing sand shed.
Okay.
That's there, not the salt shed, the old, the old salt shed would actually come down, so you had access.
Also, this would be off of the sand shed?
Yes.
And that would replace, so the salt shed would come down? And this extension would replace said salt shed, try saying that sometimes.
Basically, I think if you take the salt out, the shed is going to fall down.
Right, right.
It's pre-rotched.
Oh, okay.
If that's what you want, we'll go ahead and, you know, get some pricing on it. I'm sure everything has gone up since last year, as everything else.
Devin Neary, just from Regional Planning, was discussing that with us. He said, while you don't need an actual physical plan to apply for a grant, it helps.
Yeah.
So we want to work with an engineer or an architect or whoever to create a design and a budget. So we can be ready to go when the grant application comes out, August.
That's up to the town and that, I don't know whether they want to invest the money into designing it or having them design it. That's up to the town. I don't, I'm not sure where we stand on budget-wise, we're doing something like that.
Well, we could use the building fund or some of the ARPA money, right?
Exactly. And also, it looks like the RRPC is willing to help with the grant application process with no cost.
And then, but do the, do we know how much that grant, that they're, they would be writing for us would be going for? Or is it really just after we get the assessment of how much it might cost?
Uh, well, yeah, it's just whatever we come up with.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're basically just going to ask for that amount and then see what happens?
Right.
Okay.
And Rutland Regional can include their costs to administer the grant in the application as well.
Okay.
I would think, you know, doing it the way we're going to do, it's not going to be up into the hundreds of thousands. You know, as Timothy's way up there.
It's going to be expensive, but it's, you know, it's something I think it's, one is definitely needed. Two, I think we can get some help on design, too. They may have better ideas on what to, what not to do there.
Right.
Attach it to the pre-existing or leave it, you know, free-floating.
Or they could even, you know, look at the existing that's there and see if reinforcements needed there, too.
Yeah. Yeah, if we're tying it all together.
There, is there a firm that we've dealt with in the past on this kind of thing, or no?
We've used Dubon King and Dufresne Henry. I'm wondering if Anthony Perui is with, on our building committee, this engineer. He's actually been over there.
Yeah, but he, he wanted to tear the whole thing down, so I'm not sure that's, that's the person to ask.
It's a big agreement yet.
I think he's with Otter Creek Engineering.
It's something if the select board would like that, get help that way, it can without getting into, you know, I guess, a lot of money, extra money tying up into it. I don't know much about engineering on that stuff with, or who does it?
And Stan Milber and Timothy is helping now. He's a retired engineer. I don't know if he would be, you know, a politician, do you have Stan?
No, I don't know him, I don't think.
I know Stan.
Yeah, he was the town manager and proctor, but he's, he's an engineer and he's working with them on their salt sand shed.
Okay. Do you want me to have a conversation with Stan?
Sure, that's fine.
It sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay. It's on my to-do list?
Something that's occurred to me ever since we started talking about the salt shed. I know that in your mind, Phil, you've got a pretty good idea what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
But if you deal with Stan, trying to draw up an engineering plan of what we actually need, it's going to be hard to transfer what you guys are thinking to him. When we really, as a board, aren't sure of what you guys really want. What I think we need to have, probably all of you to sit down and do, is to kind of just take a good big art pad or something and sketch in what we've got there right now, you know, that salt shed?
Yeah.
And make, maybe a floor plan of what you want enclosed in it. You know, I, I think what you're looking at basically is like a concrete slab or pad. If I'm honest with it, I don't know if you're done.
No, no, no pad, just block walls to hold the salt in. That's all we need, we don't need any, I think the other one's dirt, well, we know the sand shed's dirt. I think that one's dirt, too. Asphalt.
All that's got is asphalt on it.
Yeah.
Well, generally, you know, if you make some kind of line drawing.
Yeah.
Of it in relation to that, where the salt, where the sand shed is there now.
Yeah.
And just show that you want it to come out 26 feet or whatever it is.
That's 50.
And 14 wide across. And then maybe some kind of idea of what you want for elevation and a slope. That way he'll have a rough idea of where he's starting at. Floor plan, I mean, from what I know about, you know, the actual construction stuff, you really need some kind of a plan to go from. And, you know, we've got to get away from your concept to a, a quick line drawing that he can work from.
Yeah.
Well, hey, any, I was going to say, any engineer worth his salt ought to be able to take, take Phil's, discuss with Phil and be able to create a design for us.
Yeah.
So I think a conversation with Phil and whoever's talking.
Yes. It's a pretty simple shed. Posts, some blocks, bits of truss rafter, that's it. Doesn't need to be enclosed. Some retaining walls inside it, and that's it.
Couple of holes down there, you'd have a whole idea.
Yeah, yeah, won't take long, you know, go over it.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Yes, I guess then the thing for Kathy is for you to go and just talk to them saying, we want to do this. And then we want you also to meet with Phil so that he can give you an idea of what they need before we have you start working on the plan.
Great.
I guess that's what we're saying, right? That we're saying, Nelson? Just making sure, yeah.
I think you want to determine whether he's doing this voluntarily or it's.
That's it.
A paid job or whatever, too, beforehand.
Oh, yeah. I'll be sure to find that out.
I noticed we didn't get to the last two grant. I see Sandy said it was denied, or Brian Sanderson did.
Yeah.
There's not much talking about that. I went over to Tara and Cloud and looked at the jumps, or bike jumps, whatever, and the trees that need to be moved around. I told her I'd try to get there this coming week. I don't know what Mother Nature did to me, how things went. But I'm going to go over within the next week or so and take care of that for her. Very simple project, won't take long. Couple, three hours will be all done. Also removing the upper tree that's up on whatever trail that was. Yeah. We still don't know if it's the rock moving and drove in there. But it's pretty much going to go away with Mother Nature, grass will cover it. Put the rock back. The other one is, let's see, the trail, I went and graded holes, pedestrian bridge. I didn't know there was any drainage holes in that pedestrian bridge I plugged. I thought it was just.
We put holes in it because it kept.
Oh, I thought it was just going out under the sides.
It doesn't blow up?
Oh, it doesn't, it just stays in the.
Charlie and Lori were over there today.
Lori went over there today and cleaned the holes out, so it's.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've walked over that bridge many a time, and when it's flooded, it's.
Yeah.
A little interesting.
Like a miniature lake.
Yes.
Yeah. What it is, is it sticks in the sand, get in the holes and they plug up and you just got to go over there and just poke them back out again. Yeah. Constant.
Guess Steve would be the one to talk to about the Elfin Lake road when they're going to do that. Next year.
No. Hopefully I'll get down there. Next week? Next week, I want to get down there. Because I'm almost, almost done with Sugar Hill. I'm going to come down there because that won't take long to do Elfin Lake, so first part of next week, should be down there. Clean that up, grade it up, cut any brush that needs cutting back. That opens up toward the end of the month, right, or?
Well, they're going to be delivering the dock the end of May, so.
End of May, okay.
Yeah, that's, we need it to be.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I don't think there's anything else I've got, I don't know if Steve's got any.
I think we're doing this tomorrow, trying to do very, maybe doing the raindrops.
So you know the, you know the West Hill, Mooney, and Dougway project is due mid-June? What?
Let's cook, get everything.
Do you need, do you need to order 36-inch culvert for that?
I don't think you need 36 down there.
That's down in Mooney?
36 to 24.
No.
Not a Mooney road.
Nope.
Dougway.
Dougway's way at the bottom.
This is part of that Better Roads grant, and they're, they're not going to.
Yeah, that would, Stephanie said no extensions, there's no extensions on it, so. The culvert that they were talking about today was up there on Blackwood, on JB Road. And we're going to have to get ahold of Josh.
Josh.
Yeah. Because that's a.
Truss.
Or a Neil.
Or a Neil?
That's what I'm looking for. I'm calling a street, so.
Charlie just said that Phil thought that we might either use West Hill, Mooney, or Dougway Road and that it might be backordered on those culverts if we need it. Project's due in six weeks, so it's, it might be tight if they're out of inventory.
I think the three footer we talked about was up on Black Hawk, right?
Yeah.
I don't remember Mooney.
West Hill is way up toward Big Hill, up by Glunden, by the turnout. And that's all, that's all just ditch work and cleaning everything up. Because hasn't been done in years. And Mooney, Mooney is the ditch line when you go up in, when you come to the first level, first flat area, that whole ditch line up the left-hand side of the road is, worked its way toward the road and started to heat the bank off the edge of the road, so. That's why I want to get some stone in there and armor that bank up, so it doesn't do it anymore. And Dougway's way down at the bottom, and that's, that's all the big tree cut. That's way at the bottom, right by that.
On Spanish, up on the edge past. The pros where John hit that tree. Drew talked about it earlier.
No, 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 way down below, right by the triangles. Oh, we're small pin. You got the chunk of ledge on the right.
Yeah.
Would you be a good time to take that out right now?
Yeah.
Gives a place for sale.
So do you think you'll need any copper for any of those roads? Do you think you'll need any copper for any of those roads that needs to be ordered?
Coppers.
Yeah.
There'd be one, that one in Black Hawk, I'm sure.
Yes, yeah, yes. Yeah, up on Chapees, that's, like I said, that's a constant stream that we'll have to get with Josh to see what he says first.
But not for the West Hill, or Mooney, or Dougway?
No.
Okay. Great.
If there's any culvert we need on Dougway, I have it down the garage.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we decide between A1 and Wind River?
Yeah.
On Stormbrades, we've got two estimates, one's from A1 and the other's from Wind River. Have you guys had a feel for a look at that?
Actually talked to anyone, he called me, I want to say Thursday night. And last year, when he did the cleaning, he dumped it in the town sand pile. So there was no disposal fee. He just dumped it down there. Whereas the other gentleman, I think he's got an disposal fee, with so much done.
219, it's on. I know, we're using A1 in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys have a reference of who you want to use?
I, I use A1.
Okay.
A1.
Very good.
Is everybody, are you going to go over there?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're good on A1.
Thank you.
And that's just going to put us 500 over on what we budgeted for. Okay.
Last year, he said 2,500, too, when he got it done early, so it might be less.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
I don't think there's anything we can come up with right now. Have you, have you got a price from anybody, or have an idea for it coming?
Well.
Everything we've looked at so far has gone enough.
No.
And here, where we did go was 65,000 on the budget. It's, do you have any, all part of you with your, with your idea for the roads?
Well, this Taff Terrace is atrocious. This one's, it's bad from one end, it, it's so short, if you don't do the whole thing, you're going to pay a moving fee to come back and do it again. It's just, it's bad from one end to the other. So. And I honestly, I think that road right there will do your budget.
Okay.
We'll come up with an alternate. Steve's got a couple other spots, short pieces we could do right in town. We, one of these years, we have to go to East Wallingford and do something up there. We need to correct the water issue coming off the hill first. Before we can do anything up by the fire for that quarter. Sewers Farm, the old dairy road.
If you're trouble, if you run across a lake, it might be just a good idea asking how the asphalt is going, whether it's gone up or.
It's gone up drastically.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
Considered it's like 45 or 50% fuel. And petroleum products in total is like 65%.
We also got a question, the overweight. Is it a quick, the only real question you've got? I, I don't think we ever set an actual weight on it, I know we advised you not to go over 50,000.
Yeah, on the bridge at one time.
I don't know how we break that up in, you know, we actually in a weight, weight category or an important ordinance or anything.
Well, it's, I'm not sure there's a, you can put a weight limit on like a fuel truck or like a, something like that, it's going to perish for, or whatever, however you want to propose it. It's not perishable, but it's delivering.
Essential?
Heating oil, propane, whichever. And, you know, it's, I don't know if you can, they're, begin with, they're single axle trucks are not even close to being an issue weight-wise. They mostly would weigh, it's 33, 34,000 pounds. That would be most loaded. Well, I don't know if you got into, you know, if she signed or somebody did up there and cited a bill, then you probably have to think about how to re-approach doing the weight on the bridge. For, as, you know, it's for propane truck or something like that, I see no issue whatsoever.
I don't think we have a problem with propane truck across there. My thought is, I'm not sure what Kevin did, whether he's using fuel oil or not. But I would prefer not to see a totally loaded, you know, fuel truck go in there.
He'd be in the same boat, he'd only be about 35,000, a single axle.
I don't know if anybody uses tandems on fuel or not.
Not many companies are doing mobile delivery with tandems. Some of the things. I don't know if anybody has a tandem mobile delivery truck, other than Irving has propane and does that. But he normally does the bigger developments and the bigger tanks where he's dropping 2,000 gallons of wax. I don't know of anybody. Kevin Burns primarily wood, wood with electric backup, I think.
And nobody from True Temper goes over that, going out, right?
I don't know, maybe.
If you're ready to probably do and escape 24,000, then probably what we'll do.
Yeah, that one's posted for 16 disposal because of the wood deck. With the IBs and stuff that's under it, I think you'll find it's way over 20, 16 or 24,000. If we leave it alone at 16 and figure on, you know, make like fuel truck or propane truck that goes across it occasionally and leave it at that and leave the permit set up, so if there is somebody going to do something major up there, they need to come and let the town know and follow through with permitting, overweight permits and insurances and stuff like that.
Okay.
I don't think, you know, we should just open it up. I think we should kind of leave it at the 16 or, 16 to 24 range, you know, as far as it's just going to be fuel trucks or propane. I don't know what else would go up there.
Cement? If somebody wanted to bring them.
Well, if they build up there, then you're going to, they're going to have to have a building permit, you're going to know about it.
Right, 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 right.
But other than that, I don't know what else would possibly go up there. I know they used to put tankers across that, tractor trailers, years ago.
Is that something that we have to give over to Erica for her to draw up the permit, or? If we were to, if we were to grant it to like Johnson because they're going to be doing regular deliveries and they're over 16?
They're going to be over 16,000, but it's, you know, it's just a, you know, once every, maybe a month, if that. But as long as we know they're going in and out of there, we can keep an eye on it. Like I said, there's no issues there with propane or fuel truck, single axle. Like I said, there's no issues there with propane or fuel truck, single axle.
Okay.
Maybe we should put something in writing, no tandem axle vehicles or three axle vehicles over the bridge unless permitted through the town or something. Then we'd know what was going on up there. Because I don't know any reason of anybody else being up in there.
Well, the issue is whether we give Johnson energy of overweight permit, isn't it? It sounds like we, we can give him the permit.
Well, they'll be okay pretty much living like it is with the, with sixteen.
Yeah, I'm, I agree with Phil. I think we should just leave it at sixteen and somebody's going to have to approach us if they've got something much heavier.
That's what I would do. Let them come to us and ask, and make them ask.
Anything for agreement? Anything else, Phil?
Nope, I think I almost, I don't sneeze yet any.
Good. I think I have it all. Public comments. I think you all had in your, I'll throw one in here real quick. I think you all had a copy of Mark Ron's letter to his dining. I would just ask for an agreement to accept his letter, send a letter with that material. And I actually have Sandy close the positions. You guys are all in public at home in this? Southern Rec Council or training, I think that's pretty well described enough to us. Basically, I think we just have to put the interim program. I think we left it pretty much as we were going to do that. I want you to hear what we're all going to add.
Lisa sent me an email this afternoon and asked if there needs to be a little subcommittee forum to work on like an application and decide like a fee or if you want to just leave it up to her.
Why don't we leave it to them to get the application? And anybody that they accept will all care.
Well, V L C T recommended only one or two people. I don't think we, I think we need to limit it to one or two people.
And I think we should also include nominal fee.
Right, right. Which I think she was, she was on.
That Lisa knows that it should be limited to one or two counselors and that it should be nominal fee attached.
Yes.
That way we make that distinction between volunteers and employees.
Make sure whoever does it's kind of vested.
Which I think she already has some kiddos in mind, I thought.
The swim water test and this will be a real heavy weight. Are they, they're not going to do any testing in Randolph, are they, or you don't know?
Not yet, I mean, they haven't said they're going to, but that's driving it to Randolph the same day.
Yeah. I know, once or twice I would go up.
I know.
But I don't want to get into it every week or something.
Right, I mean, we just soon use this Lebanon place. It'd be cheaper with the gas prices, it'd be cheaper just to drive to Rutland and let the courier take it over Lebanon.
What do you think would work best for you? Because you're, you're basically doing the testing.
I'm definitely the Lebanon place.
Lebanon.
It's just a matter of how often you want to test.
How long is the lake open for?
Um, like two, eh, two months.
For two months, so that would be pretty easy. And how much is it per test?
It's twenty a test. They, they send us all the bottles at once and there's a twenty-five dollar fee for that one shipping. And then it's twenty, um, oh, it's twenty-five dollars per test. And then twenty for the ship, to ship all the bottles at once.
And that's one time fee, that time?
Yeah, so if we get two tests or ten, it's still going to be the twenty-dollar shipping. And then as we use the bottles, it'll be twenty-five dollars per testing to re, for the results.
I'm in favor of weekly testing while the, you know, when it's long. Did I miss, does it say how long it takes to get the results?
It's really quick. It's like, I think, you know, I think we did them on Wednesdays. By either Friday or Monday, we have the results.
I was thinking, because if we don't.
Can't touch me each week?
Yes.
It's down all summer or just when they're out.
For the two months that's open, just for when we have sun.
So two hundred bucks?
I, I agree with you, Kathy, so just to, especially since we have a camp that is based out over there. If there was something in the water and we're not doing our due diligence to make sure to expose those children, that we are taking care of.
And our summers have been hot and that water gets hot. That's when things can only be growing over there. So I just think it's been a bust to do.
The tests are actually doing very good that we did. I would say you more along with wanting to be there testing a couple of times or perhaps it's the most testing just prior to the week that they were going to have a camp.
You test the week prior to camp?
Yeah, just like three days before the camp.
Are they open for four weeks?
Yes. They're new from camp four weeks.
So that would be, well, would it be testing each week prior to the week that they have camp?
Yeah, I mean, if they were going to be opening one week, I would suggest probably having the test come back by a month.
Would you think of doing weekly tests while the camp is open? Or are you talking about one test before the whole thing opens?
I think last year we did one before it opened. I think we did just one during the year.
Last year was a special circumstance, fun, right? And that the weeks were separated. So we, so we did test three times because they were, there was time between the three weeks. Am I correct on that? Okay, so that we test twice. I, I think we should test more often myself.
Because we also charge people to go there.
I think at least if we're not willing to do the two months, that when the camp is open, we test the week before it opens and then each week while it's open. We are charging money for this.
Isn't that based on warm weather, the problems in the water?
Typically, yes.
So if you have a cold.
You have a cold summer.
You won't last quite so long with test, need so many testing. Could you base it on the temperature or the weather, the weather cooperated or not?
If, if we're looking at predictions, they're predicting a hot summer. And, and I remember one year with Wallingford Day, it was like, it was like, and that whole July was, was like super, super hot. Was that back in twenty nineteen?
Historically, it's never been an issue though. I mean, we've never had anything where it ever came close to even being.
The only thing I would say as, as, as a parent, as a, as a mother, our weather is changing. We don't know when things are going to go in a certain direction. I would feel, my own opinion, I, I really feel that we should be testing at least when the camp is open every week. And I, I will be okay with whatever the board decides by how to state how I feel about it.
And that's, as a parent and also as a medical laboratory scientist, I see all the people coming in with GI issues and the testing and it's normally related to, it's, it's increased in the summer, so.
Does anybody have any motion to do a weekly?
So I, I'll do, and I'm willing to do an amended motion if this one doesn't go through. I make a motion that we test while the lake is open this summer every week.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Second on that.
So that's a total, that's a total of four tests only for the year?
No, that would be, that would be eight weeks.
Oh, eight weeks.
And then a.
Oh, you're sorry, sorry, I thought you were talking about the, the camp again.
No, I'm talking about cutting the lake open this summer that we test weekly.
Okay, I'll call with motion on favor of that. Say aye.
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 Motion passed.
Want you to go on that?
I'm okay with it.
The heck did I do with mine? The Master Gardener Applicate. Are you here for that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, we were approved by the University of Vermont to be a designated Master Gardener Garden in Wallingford. So it's, it's great. It's an incentive to really make the garden better. It's not going to be dramatic immediately. We have like a five-year plan so that people won't get scared by, you know, backhoes going in or anything like that. It's going to be very slow, leading out some things that have kind of gotten overgrown. But U V M is asking for a memorandum of agreement that the town is okay with us doing this. They're asking the same thing of the library, which is hosting our educational sessions.
And that would include like the volunteer background checks?
Yes.
They would have that and say anybody, okay, cool.
Yes, we will.
Just looking at the form here real quick, is that something somebody in the board has to sign on or is that actually for whoever the Master Gardener is?
Uh, no, I would be the Master Gardener.
And you would sign up on that?
Lead on the project, but the town and the library are being asked to sign a memorandum of agreements that you know we're doing this.
Do we have that in our land?
Um, I believe Sandy has.
Okay.
That's what he else is holding up. Yeah, that's up.
Okay. I'm okay.
Personally, I've all been there and all been booked down there. And I quite frequently see them working on that. Because everybody knows I go to town a couple of times a day anyhow. And it is really nice. Be quite honest, you'd be surprised at the number of town or just stop, take over perhaps the whole, whole area in there and enjoy it.
I got a lot of comments from the reviewers at U V M who live all over the state and know that garden. So they were really excited when we applied.
That's it, Sam.
It points out that we have enough in any way that we can get some more, so what you're doing.
I do have a question though. Who's, who's responsible for doing the background checks?
U V M does them. If we recruit a volunteer, there's a form and we submit it online.
Okay, so the town is not responsible?
No, they can be expensive.
Just as a side saying, I assume that when they're, they're actually working, that they're covered on our insurance. It might be a good idea to check the V L C T, just in case somebody spikes and sells their space and then tows things. You'll be able to now be responsible for your insurance, right?
No.
I just want Sandy to make sure you are covered. I don't think it will happen here. You never know if you're working out there.
I agree, gardening can be hazardous. But volunteers have been doing the garden for years, so if one of them had fallen down and sued the town in the past, it would be no different going forward. Let's cross our fingers and hope it's us.
I'm just still going to ask the board, it's not, it's not town property.
It's not town property, it's not a town function per se. I mean, we're supporting her spiritually or whatever, but.
You know, I thought the fact that they put that in there, there was some kind of an agreement with property. Do we own the void and wood itself?
Maybe a can of worms you don't want to open.
She'll get back here.
The only thing I see on here that we haven't addressed is just if, uh, writing up like the proposal that you're thinking about these five years so that we can get it to Sandy to get onto the website. Because that is one stipulation that we have to put the information about the project on, it says your website, so I assume that would be the town being that we're backing it.
Yeah. We could provide pictures. I know Julie, the town clerk, has posted pictures before.
Right, right, or the, just the, an actual write-up of what the project is supposed, even if it's just like two paragraphs of this is what the project's doing.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then maybe a picture right now of what the boot is and then, because it's also saying that it wants you folks to send photos every January.
Yeah.
Which is a weird time.
I think, I think that's what it means, yeah. But if you could write a general summary of what this five-year plan looks like, I think that's good information.
All right. Glad to do it. I have to say that Sandy was very helpful all through this process of applying and getting materials they wanted. And it was due in February and they wanted a picture. So it wasn't very attractive as a garden in February, but Julie had pictures from last season, so we were able to submit those. So everyone's been very helpful.
So I guess then it's do we sign the M O U as it's set up?
I would thank you. Thank you.
I was waving my hand during your water quality discussion. I'm retired, but I used to manage an environmental testing laboratory in Massachusetts. And the geese at Elephant Lake are a major hazard to the water quality. We actually had to shut down several state parks in Massachusetts because they walk up and down the beach with their droppings and they drop all over the raft that kids swim out to. And the contents of their feces destroy the water. They carry a lot of bacteria. So testing is crucial to protect the kids.
Kathy, can I?
Okay, so that, I think it was three weeks ago, maybe seventeen, three weeks ago, on, on Monday, we took a sidewalk. Monday, we took a sidewalk tour with Devon and Eric. And basically what we did is we started here at Town Hall, we went up and down School Street, we then walked out Main, Main Street heading north, we went, did we go up, I think we went up?
Yeah, Prospect Hall.
Prospect Hall, we went up that way. We came down, we went down past the post office, that maple that we wanted, and then we proceeded down Maple, and then we walked the railroad.
Railroad?
Over to, yes, over to Depot, and then we walked up Florence. And so basically, as we were walking, Devon let us know that there's two sidewalk grants, two different types of sidewalk grants you can go through. There's a mini grant that you can apply for, and that has minimal paperwork to it, not so many hoops to go through. It's a 50/50 match, and it's for a smaller job that you're looking for, a mini job. The other one has a lot more hoops to go through, it's a much more involved application process. It's an 80/20 match where this, we give 20%, and the, the state will then match 80. And it's for a big project, we want to do something that has some sort of big impact, a large-scale job. So basically, after doing our walk up and down, Devon found two sites that he thought, one that's good for a mini grant application, and one that's good for a major grant application. And the mini grant would be from down, down Depot Street, from where the Main Street and the library is, down there to take care of, because that, that needs some paving, and that would fit a mini grant application process. Oh, and there was, there was also time limit, so we could get a small project done pretty quickly, but Sandy, I just can't remember how long they say it would take for the larger one.
It had to, um, twenty, end of 2023, I think, maybe?
Yes, that, that would take a longer amount of time, but we could get work done on a smaller project within the year, is what he was saying that we could think about doing. And so the major project he's thinking of is all of School Street, the entire, what, what we have paved to redo the entire thing. He was thinking that we would go for a hundred thousand from the town, four hundred thousand from the state, and that it would be a job around five hundred thousand dollars to, to do that. But that both of those projects need to be done, and that this, this would be a good way for us to go approaching, to do a mini grant on Depot and to do a major grant for...
The mini on Depot?
Yeah.
That goes from the library to where?
That goes from the library down to the corner, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, to the intersection of...
Yes.
But that's all concrete now?
So, I don't know if that is, no, that's paved.
It is paved?
Yep.
Some of it's paved.
Okay.
I'm not sure all of it, but some of it is, I know.
Yes.
Sure, the mini one?
The, the paved portion is what?
The mini one?
They won't pay for...
What's that?
They won't pay for paving though, you have to do concrete.
Oh, yes, they will not pave, you have to do concrete, and he talked about the kind of concrete that they use, it's very long-lasting. And you were saying something, sorry?
The depot, the intersection, maybe give you a rough idea of what would be done at, is that like a hundred thousand or?
I think that was, that was much less, or something you're talking about?
It can be up to 150, but it's 50/50, so we would be responsible for 75,000.
Yes, so that's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's like a one-time only, you can apply now and do it once, or? He didn't say that.
No.
He didn't say that, but if it's like the paving grants, you kind of get in line, and then once you get it, for a long, long time again.
Yeah.
Sorry, what was the cost again for Depot, or did he not give it?
So the cost for Depot, 75,000 for our portion, because it's a 50/50 grant.
Well, the mini grants are 150,000, up to 150,000. I don't think he gave us a price yet for Depot though.
No.
I just think he just wants to give us... School Street, he hasn't given us a price for Depot.
He did, that's true, he did not give us a price for Depot, so...
I think he thinks we aim for one, and he just thought the School Street was...
And he also said that...
Really, a higher priority and a very good chance of getting it.
Yes, we thought it's a very good chance for School Street to qualify, yeah. And then he was saying, if we want to get something more done now than we can see about applying for a mini grant for, for Depot, because it's going to take a while before people see any paving done on School Street with the application process and everything, it's going to be a bit. Going for the 50/50 grant for Depot would give us something more immediate. And I thought he said it was going to be less money for, for Depot.
It might be less money, but I'll bet it's, I bet it'll be $300,000 to do Depot. I mean, if it's, if it's a half a million to go this distance to school.
I think it was only for one side of Depot, wasn't it? It was just for the, the south side, the side by the water.
Yeah, but you do, you're talking just one side here too, right?
No, we're talking both sides of School Street to the entire thing.
Wait, are you going past?
Not going past, but whatever their sidewalks do, replace all the sidewalks in School Street, all of them.
Well, that's a lot more than I...
Yeah.
Still, it's a lot of money.
Just a quick segue in, looking at School Street and then looking at Depot on one side, you're probably looking at about this is the size of what's going east. So this is a guess, I'm thinking probably if it went a hundred thousand to do that section, you'd be looking at 50 for the town.
I think that was more in line of what he was saying.
And if you're looking at 400, total five, going east on School.
Yeah.
You're looking at another 100. Have we had any kind of conversation with Peg or any of the ARPA committee?
Peg was there.
She was, so I'm thinking if she were to look at maybe about 100 and 150 of funds available, it might be either way, use the 50 first and keep the 100. We should know before the time that it runs out on a further grant, because then for the bigger grant. My suggestion would be that we ask the ARPA committee to consider $150,000 for work with side walk.
Do we know if like, if, like if it's like the road grants where if we apply for the small one, we're out and running for the big one?
No, they're, they're separate entities.
Okay, because that would, that would worry me, just to do this thing to say, throw away to say that this is something we can do now versus...
No, Devon made it very clear we could apply for both and that it would not get us out of the running for either by, by applying for both.
You said the longer, what, the, the School Street would take a lot longer to go through the process?
Yes.
About how much longer, would it still be done this year, would that be more of a next year, two year, three year down the road?
No, we wouldn't get our grant approved until, was it 23?
So what?
When, when did they say, it was going to take a while to get the School Street one, through the whole process?
Yeah, towards the end of June.
Yes.
Maybe by the end of the summer, we'd know. So financially, we would not be paying for both of these in the same fiscal year?
Right. Correct. Because it's a much more involved process for that larger project. And for the smaller one, we could go ahead like Sandy said and get that application done and out and then find out if it was approved or not in a much shorter span.
Do we want to have Devon do the same kind of estimate he did for School Street first before we say, let's go start working on this? Just so we know, because we, we want to know whether or not 150 is going to be enough.
And it might be that he had already talked about it and we just don't have it written down, so would, would that be something you could do, Sandy?
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions?
You can talk about Prudential Committee budgeting some of this too, right?
Okay.
Prudential Committee budgeting some, I know there's conversations about Prudential Committee budgeting for sidewalks as well, even if it's... And we also have the RPA application trust, that would be released at the end of next year, that's a lot of money.
With, with the amount of money that's going to be involved, I'm sure the Prudential Committee is going to be involved at all, if they can avoid it. We've never, we've never actually come up with a final agreed agreement of who we had asked and what parts of the Prudential Committee is going to play in all of this. I think right now, if we look beyond actually our funds, I don't see any way that we're going to be able to budget in our budget nor their budget for the sums of money that are going to be needed to be contributed by the town without every taxpayer dumb going ballistic when they hear the numbers. I, I tend to, I think the main thing we have to look at right now is getting Peg's committee on board with sidewalk and promulium.
Do we have?
If we start looking at $150,000 of town funds, even with a $400,000 premium, in the foreseeable future, unless we get General Wiger to put an airplane back to the end of town, there's no way we have a tax base to do that.
Now, I know there was conversation at some point of the town and the Prudential Committee putting money in, boards the sidewalks, so where do we start with that?
But I had a hack of time getting them to commit $2,000, you know, that was full of heat. And we're looking at even in the future, it might be a minimal, but or maximum, maybe 10,000 each. I mean, they are not going to be prepared in any way to hear this kind of number.
Right.
And particularly the 300 residents that are painting the water, are not going to be receptive at all to that kind of, of the next one. I think for now, we need to concentrate our effort with the ARPA committee to be sure that they're on board with, I really, we have a final say, but I don't see the board, if we get a negative from that, I don't see us holding a certain person who's been on our list.
But do we have some money already set aside for sidewalks?
No.
No?
The ARPA money is in the bank for the first half of it.
Okay.
But even applying for these grants, we need to know that they are going to be willing to, some will do it or...
I think you're right, Nelson, though, we have the final say, I mean.
Yes.
It's not the ARPA committee saying, they're just making recommendations, so.
Yes.
But it's our decision.
For sure, but I think also at the same time, we have to honor the fact that they've all committed to taking time to go through this whole process and figure out how we actually get all this money. So just as, as knowing that we're going to decide in the end, but also just looping them in, saying, you know, this is something we think we really need to do, and this is an opportunity we won't have ever again to do. I think that, if we phrase it that way, it lets them have a decision still, but then, of course, they can see the minutes when these end. It's kind of beyond the point, but I definitely, yeah, maybe ended us, is us, but strong-arming is never a great way of going about things, if it can be avoided.
And are we pretty much set that we have other use for the revenue augmentation fund monies?
Well, we're buying a grader, let's not forget that.
All shed.
Well, there we go. Oh, and then one thing that came up on our tour is that there are some crosswalks in town that really need to be painted. There's the crosswalk down, going across Florence Street, that's basically completely eradicated. There's the other crosswalk from Meadow Street over to the bridge, and that really needs to, and then Sandy brought up the signage on the yield, heading up Depot Street.
Yeah, when you're coming from the Meadow Street or whatever, you're coming down.
The signage on Depot Street.
You blow right through that yield sign.
I'd have complained about that for probably close to the start of the year, it's been over hit, it's been on the sidewalk. At one time, it was actually even made it across the road.
Okay.
To be honest, that whole intersection needs somebody that does painting and delineation to come in. My personal thought is that I know it can be done, but an actual painted arc can be painted through that intersection, displaying the curb. If you sit there as long as I have, you'll see people virtually cutting that corner to the point where they almost go over the sidewalk on the southern side.
Yeah.
I don't know why we haven't had a head-on collision.
Yeah.
I don't know why some poor motorcyclists haven't got run over there.
Yeah.
Because you can't see them coming around the corner.
No.
I have asked boards in the past if we could simply get the guy from Chittenden that has done our crosswalk to come down and make the circular arc through that intersection to delineate the lane.
Okay.
I've seen it in towns where they have this, they do a center line, they do a fog line, you'd refer to it as.
Okay.
But if we don't do it this year, we should budget for it.
So if we can look into that, and what about the painting of the, repainting of the crosswalks, do we have the money for that right now?
No, we don't have the money for any of that, it hasn't been budgeted.
Okay.
How do the, who paints?
We put $500 in for traffic signs, I think.
Yeah, who, Phil, who paints the crosswalks?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Is the one?
It was Lafayette who?
Who?
Lafayette. He was kind of painting a lot.
They do it, but Chuck Wade used to work for him, Charlie Wade. He has done work for us in town here before. He painted the Mill Park, he was owned down here, one of his paintings. It'll come if we want to get home what his name is.
Okay.
We couldn't get the State Agency of Transportation to do this stuff, at least on Main Street and 140?
Well, I'm wondering, would the state do that?
Oh, on the state roads, they will.
Okay.
Which is 140 and 7, were they considered because it's Depot Street and School Street, is that considered?
I'm not sure where their part ends. I know we're talking, you know, it's, when you go down Depot and then you take the left, you're walking towards Meadow Street, and that, it's that crosswalk right there. You get there, and you, the sidewalk ends, and there's, the crosswalk is so faded.
Yes.
Really needs one there, and you can see it used to be, I don't know if that would be the state...
Yeah, and there's one, there's that one right across where you have to, to get to the bridge, where, and that cross is right over 140. So I'm wondering if that one might qualify, and I don't know if the one on Florence Street will.
And then there's the one on the other side of the bridge.
Yes.
Crosses to Waldo Lane.
Yes, the one across Waldo Lane. Yep.
Who thought of that crazy system? Because it's never made sense to me.
I mean, even the yield sign, I don't understand why they still have like an orange yield sign. It's like a rectangular sign, and it's two things on it. It's hard to even notice it. Do we not, do people not do yellow triangular yield signs anymore?
I know, they do wherever it works.
Our yield sign doesn't look like a yield sign.
No, it doesn't. It looks like some sort of informational sign, and it's a yield.
You're trying to teach somebody to drive. Do we have any yield signs at the garage?
Should be some down there, they had a bunch down there, Steve's got a bunch piled in the corner there.
I mean, if we could put a yellow yield sign there, that might even be a fractional improvement over what we have now.
At least it goes with normal...
Probably have to...
A caution sign, yes.
You have to put in a regulated, regulation pole.
Okay.
Breakaway pole and all that stuff, because you're not going to be in the state right away. That'd be one of the...
And we don't have that, do we?
Nothing's easy, Eddie.
Okay. And we don't have any of those poles hanging around, breakaway pole.
Probably not.
Okay.
They're two-piece.
Okay. So that was the other thing that came up on the sidewalk visits, so there's all the information.
So it looks like at least sometime soon, we should start looking at how much it may cost so we can plan that down along with everything else that we need to do?
Yes.
And so we'll bring it up to ARPA about the cost of the, of what we're looking for? And then Sandy, would you be able to talk to Devon and see if he had some sort of estimate on, on Depot?
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Just thinking of, last I was thinking of crosswalks in general. On seven, is there any, that would be something we'd have to talk with the state if we wanted to add in crosswalks? Because I think about like, where my parents are crossing, like on South Main, right before the church, that is a dangerous, when you're going onto Florence, it's a pretty dangerous cross, because you get blocked by all the cars, because there's that slight curve. And just thinking if we want to, if we're thinking about sidewalks and thinking about walkability and the benches, like, is there anything to do? Like, how is that regulation going, go forward for doing crosswalks in more places? Lisa, where there's sidewalks?
The other place I think would be good for crosswalk would be around Carnival Farms, Nash Drive, having some sort of crosswalk there.
That's a popular destination for people to walk to.
I don't know if we would need a permit from the state to do that or not.
Because like, is that, is that state road there, or is that town road?
I can...
It was my understanding years ago that Wallingford was one of the three towns that regulated Route 7 or Main Highway through the town for parking.
Okay.
I don't know that we have jurisdiction for altering, you know, the traffic flow.
That's what we were wondering.
Which crosswalks would...
Right.
Brian could probably tell you that.
Yes.
If, I'm sure he'll add anything.
Great.
Can we agree to actually send Beck a letter to their committee to go and come on board and ask for their support? Just to let them know that this has been a real concern to this board on sidewalks. They might be available with this, so we look at the subject a second time, knowing that we have a favorite project or whatever.
I think also, especially in the idea of the ARPA funds, we want to make sure that these projects are visible to our town, so that we know, they know where the money's going to. And this is a, two very visual, very highly-traffic spaces. So it just, it looks nice no matter what.
It also lets them know that we're not just sitting back and...
Right.
What your, what the ARPA...
And it's items that everybody needs.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think a letter would be a good idea.
By the way, we do have a letter over there for Phillips. Ah, any others for town that are concerned? Just looking down through the other business here. Marjorie Olber, if you remember, I teased her out, and she'll send a request to the chairman that she would like to be on that board. Have we heard anything back on that?
Not yet, she's going to go to the rec, and then the rec will make the recommendation to us.
I'm sure that'll come back.
Right.
Ramon Olber Rose is offering a greater training in the month of May. They've given Steve a notice of it. I don't know how you feel, but I think we outside of worries at that.
What was it again?
Greater training.
Greater training.
Grading has always been a problem here in Olber. Steve is good, if you remember, that was one of the reasons that we actually looked for a, an outside board. I think he's okay, I don't think Charlie really would have been going to a greater training. Lori, I think, you know, I'd like to have an all-sprawled training.
I agree.
Is that a dribble or a regular weather or...
Yeah.
Any training is great.
Did you ever have anything to do with the bike trailer?
Yes, I want to overlook that. It's all set.
Is there anything else there, or maybe I've built a need to... The paving grant will deny. I think Sandy covered the grant. I would just wonder, the conservation commission will be disturbing garbage bags, a green-up day at the Gilbert Heart Library on Saturday, May 7th, for maintenance, for those of you who need to park them off.
And they're in charge of like guiding people to say, you do this street, you do this street, that kind of thing?
Everyone's...
Yeah, okay.
If everybody is good...
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.